Okay, it's six o'clock, so let's get started. If you would like to speak, there's a sheet on the back. We'd like to have your name, address, some information if you plan on speaking in public comments. Roll call.
Chairman Rock.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bush.
Here.
I'm present, George Gannon.
Here.
Darren Gore.
Here.
Thay Knox. Ron Lee. Blake O'Neal.
Here.
David Orick. Brian Reed.
Here.
Josh Roberts.
Here.
Bishop Wagner.
Here.
Joe Whitefield.
Here.
All right, Joe is joining us online. That's allowed by bylaws. Mr. Chairman, if I could state just for the record to everybody, we've once again notified Woodbury that since they do provide solid waste services or garbage pickup, even though it's through a third party, they have a seat at this table. So they've been notified inviting, and we've not received any response back. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Accept the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion with you.
Voting accept, second?
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing and public comments. If you want to have anything they'd like to say. Three minutes of April 25th meeting. Everybody should have that in your packet. Hope you're ready ahead of time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could point out a correction that needs to be made to the minutes, please. In our packets that were handed out at the last meeting, we had under the financial report an invoice for transcribing from Morgan Reporting. So it was part of our package to approve. Prior to the meeting, we notified that that was not in. We approved the expense. Then the City of Murphishville notified us that that was an expense they were incurred, so we did not have to incur that expense. And the minutes this time will reflect that update.
Any other additions or additions? Motion accept.
Make a motion accept.
You accept, have a second?
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial report.
If you will look in section F, following page F, you'll have our one-page financial report. We begin at the end of the last meeting with $8,879.31. The only expenditures we have had since then is $60 in board compensation. Our ending balance is $8,819.31. And I present that to the Board for approval.
Any questions?
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion approved, have a second?
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Annual progress report. Oh, David, oh. I guess according how we want to go.
Yes, sir.
We didn't have in front of us, I believe, Coffey County's report the night we voted on. They submitted their direct in, so I didn't see it or the Board didn't get a copy. But it did go in the statement, it was in the line and everything. When I filled out the paperwork online for South Tennessee, they told me just consider it was in their office, it was later, and just consider voting on it. Now, that's what I did, even though maybe this Board didn't physically vote on it. But the State says, don't worry about it. If you have any concerns or questions, you can vote on it as a matter of vote. It has already been turned in.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if you will. I will retain a copy of Coffey County's report so we can have a copy on hand for you. If that will be all right with you?
Yes.
Okay.
George, may I, do you have a copy?
I don't have a copy.
I don't think they've been out by there in the last week or so. It was entered into the State program. And then when I went in to try to pull it back up, they locked it down when it goes in. So I can't.
What you submit, you can't see it.
And if you recall, last, this year, we asked for a 30-day extension. They got theirs in at the appropriate time, the original due date. So that's what locked us out, and we didn't have it for the next meeting.
I spoke to the State as well, and our percentages that's reported in the meeting that we voted on did not change. They were included with the Coffey County report, so I don't see them needing anything of the noting that it wasn't there.
I wonder if I know about it. Any other comments on any of them? Thank you. Republic versus this Board, lawsuit update.
Mr. Chairman, the Courts is, the Courts are awaiting the revised administrative record. And I hope to have more of an update on that. Nothing has moved forward, there's no action due from this body at this time. Even if it was there, there's been no motions back and forth for an action required by our attorneys, opposing counsel, or this Board, so we have no update at this time.
I think, as we know, they think you're going to drag out for long enough.
Yes, sir.
Well, they just got two more years on their contract, correct? With Rutherford.
There's not a specific end date on that. It is until it is full, whatever that definition is, laterally or horizontally.
That's the close date we're going to get. County updates. Cannon, does anybody have any updates on Cannon?
Well, we're, I'm sure everybody has seen what the State gloriously has put out to all the counties and our region also. This right here will not do anybody any good, especially us. I mean, what they're, the State comes up and says, we're going to give you, you know, more money and all this, then they give us these options of what to do, which is going to cost you manpower, plus you're going to have to buy equipment. And by the time you hire your people, you give them their benefits, buy the equipment, we're still in the same hole it was when we started. Yes, ma'am?
If I could just clarify, since we have one member on the phone with us and we have some members in the audience. Vice Chairman Bush is referencing the Waste and Scrap Tire Management Toolkit. It's a guide to managing end-of-use tires in Tennessee. It was updated by T.D.A. July 2022. The members that are here have a copy of that in their packet behind tab K, listed on the agenda as K2 for new regulations. So, Mr. Chairman, my call.
And, oh, perfectly fine. And, you know, I don't know what they expect the small counties to do like Cannon. We basically run off of taxes, land taxes. We have a big farming community. People, they can't stand this. I mean, there's no justification on all their incentives, so-called, that they give us to even entertain the ideal of going with their recommendations now. And with saying that, the whole purpose when the State started this was to keep tars out of streams, out of fields, you know, trying to clean up the environment. I get it. You know, the legislature makes these laws, but they do not want to give any money to the counties, significant money, to do what they want to with the law. And I do not think that's right. I mean, it's laying on the taxpayers' burden for this. And to me, it's an insult. And I feel like that everybody around this table feels the same way. I mean, why legislate policy and then not help enhance what they want to do? Does that make sense?
And you've got several people on this board that deal with the record with that, who you do.
Oh, and, you know, and of course, since this has come out, and I'm sure, I don't know how many around here deals with Liberty Tar, but, I mean, they're eating our lunch as far as taking care of tars. And then the formula that the State gives on what you send Liberty Tar does not even come close to our mathematical figures. And we're short-changed every time a load goes out, but we still got to pay the $190 a ton. Now, they are new players in this arena now. And my county, we're reaching out and we're talking to these people. As far as our county's concerned, we feel like we're being held hostage over tars. And I just, you know, it's not going to do us no good. And that's the only comments I have.
I'm not in the tire business.
Yes, sir.
Has the State contracted with one provider?
Everybody's going with the one that we use, Liberty.
But the State has not issued.
Well, they've issued a list. We have a provider now that'll be in operation the 1st of August, which I've talked to, and a friend here has also talked to them. And they're going to be up and running in August. They're going to offer either an open-top or a closed-end trailer. And they've already made us one offer, which is considerably less than $190.
The counties aren't bound by using.
They're not bound, but, you know, this is the first time that the State has come across and gave us the list this year. And the one I'm talking about in Tallahassee is not on this list. So, but that's what we got. And then also, we're having a rash of tonnage problems, our intake on our household trash. Why? I do not have the famous ideal. We're going to have to go back and look at our procedures and policies in order for us to comply with the State issuing. And bringing up tars again in order for us to try to come up halfway decent. We're over budget right now because of tars. And we're going to have, we used to give four tars per family. Now, we're going to have to, this, we can't do that no more, and we're going to have to start charging $5 a tar for them to bring it to our landfill. I mean, there's no way around it.
You know what's going to happen?
We got to go back in the ditches and in the fields and all that. Well, you know, I'm sorry, but the State, you know, they've got all these bean counters. Maybe they can figure it out after that starts happening again.
It's going to happen.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt about it.
I have a question on this Bush.
Yes.
Is, what's the difference in the law as of July 1st that it was previous? It seems to me the same law we've been living in.
No, no. See, you've got an option right now. They give you the option now. You can, you can cut up your tars, you can shred them as of 1st of July, and you can put them in a landfill, okay? We didn't have that before.
We could, we could put quarter tires in a landfill if the landfill accepts them. Could we not?
They said any landfill at the 1st of July. Or use it for filler.
So I.
I know that overran ship, any set on.
I feel.
Waiting for that overran ship, Red County.
Well, that's, we're talking a different enemy.
Help me understand how this increases the hardship.
Increases hardship, you've got to buy the machinery, you've got to hire people to do it. Because like our facility, we're a small county. We do good to run our operations, keep it clean and all that with what, you know, we got part-time and full-time help. When you start taking in tars like we do, it'll take at least two people. And then when you got that, you're going to have to have benefits. And time you do all of this, you're no better off than when you start financially.
Now, what about something with working as a region together?
The reason together, my ideal and thinking, if everybody can come together in this region, whether it be recycling, if we can come up with somebody that everybody can live with and work with, whether it be tars or anything, solid waste, whatever, we're better off as a group. We have more power as a group than we do as individuals. We can dictate our policy. We can, it'll be more protective towards us as far as our solid waste is concerned. But trying to fight the big dogs, one county at a time, they'll gobble you up. And I wish everybody would entertain the ideal about, you know, everybody trying to get together and work on something that'll be beneficial for all of us and cheaper as we go.
We have to go into recess. Before we get to that, could I elaborate on Mr. Bishop's question? Has what has changed with the law? Based on the code, a section was removed out of the existing law. The new law ends with landfill shall not accept poll untraded. What you see there is, what you see in the packet is existing law minus this section and now going to apply. The county may not dispose of shredded waste tires in a landfill after July 1, 2022 if the county's net costs for shredding, transporting, and disposal of waste tires exceed the cost of available beneficial end-use. Nothing in this subsection shall prohibit a county from electing to participate in a beneficial end-use for waste tires if costs exceeds the county's net costs for shredding, transporting, and disposing of waste tires in a landfill. So that section came out.
So for clarity, it's removed the inhibit?
Correct, correct. And it added, the remaining balance of the fee must be allocated to the solid waste management fund established by 68-211-81.
That's the 35 cents? On top, we get the dollar back and it's 35 cents to.
Unless there's some agreement that was in place prior to the $1 going into the fact that was through grants, and there's that section for that.
Thank you. I'm not ignoring, I'm not ignoring anything.
I'll probably be your chairman, but it's.
No, it's just, once we pass public comments, the Board has a discussion. If somebody on the Board wants to recognize him to, you know, speak or something, we have.
We'd have to go to recess to hear from anybody outside.
You have to. I'm sorry about that.
Pass on. Have we already gone past public comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, so that sounded up there and I didn't.
Yes, sir, we did. I now, public hearing, public comments, and waited, nobody even spoke right now.
Oh, I just thought I had to sign it and go on.
Mr. Chairman, since that was the first time we've had a sign-in sheet like this, I don't mind making, going into recess to hear. But before we do that.
Let's see if we're this.
I can elaborate a little more what Mr. Bishop, Mr. Bush has brought up about this new waste tire collecting. Under the rules, I think, but definitely in the packet we're seeing, now it says for waste tire collection site permitting, that the criteria outlined below will assist local municipalities, counties, and other interested parties in obtaining permits and determining a waste tire collection location. And in one of those, in addition to meeting all local zoning permitting and land use applications relative to the site, they have to approach the region's Solid Waste Board for discussion and review. So that's going to be coming before our Board. There's no clarification that I've seen with this yet as to whether or not that means we also have to approve. But it definitely, they're definitely going to have to come before us for review and discussion.
Since, since we're talking about this, Senator Mark Pody had brought up a piece of that legislation about old rock quarries. What happened to that piece of that legislation? Did it die, or is it going forward? Has anybody heard?
If you'll let me come back to that.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We got our mind. Heard that. Because I hadn't seen nothing on my side, that's why I was asking. And I'm sure some of the members around here will remember, Senator Mark Pody had a piece of legislation that all old rock quarries, they wouldn't use no more. They were trying to get legislation through where they could use the old rock quarries as a landfill. So that's why I brought up the question. There's quite a few quarries that are not being used around our parts, so.
Sure, there's one you could line them in and treat them like a riverland.
Yeah. But the trick is all the people around them.
Side of the landfill would be awesome. Oh, they need centers, are they? We're going to.
Yeah, please, please.
We're going, we'll come back to this. Coffey County, can you comment? Rutherford County, you have any?
I don't believe I have anything directly coming out of Rutherford County. I ordered some, some high-capacity compactors. I think that's probably gone around, around the table. Y'all might have already heard about that. I'm going to put them into action starting in November. I plan on sharing the data with y'all after I find out how they work to see if that might be something that, that the rest of the counties in the region might be interested in looking at. The cost is priced to be double for the container, but they're, they're, they're seeing for a better counter there. They can accept almost double the tonnage, and they can crush a lot of our open-top garbage too, which might reduce load count. When I got some solid stuff, I'll do a presentation on it so that y'all can see, see that.
Warren County. Got some grants coming open here. We're looking, they're getting a discussion, a little bit about that. We're looking at combining two convenience centers in Warren County, Marston and Smart Station. They're both on a railroad. We've got a TDEC issue out of Marston, and the railroad is wanting us off to base some property at Smart Station. So going forward, looking at that, trying to buy some property and try to get that.
Yeah, I forgot to mention the grants, the TDEC grants cycle are open. Did y'all attend the meeting, the grant leaving by chance?
Has that done opened?
They, well, they sent an email today saying that they're going to, because there were some questions in the, in the deal about the length of time for the application process, would be enough for us to get it before our commissions. And they've lengthened that per the email today. I spoke with Christina Perez at TDEC today about that, and they intend on trying to work with us to figure out how the best meet our schedules so that we can get some of those grants in.
All right, I'll make a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion, we recess.
Have a second? Say it if you want to, sir, if you'd like to address the committee.
So my name is Scott Danbury. I'm from Warren County. And I've been looking at this tire problem for a long time. I've worked with Tennessee, that stands for our agency that looks at intergovernmental relations. We did a study two years ago. What that study found out was that we got a big glaring hole in the program. When you go buy new tires from a new tire dealer, you get charged a fee. That fee comes back to your counties to provide for that shredding and disposal of the tires. Used tire dealers do not have to charge that fee. What happens almost everywhere across Tennessee is that when Firestone takes those four tires off your car and they've got maybe 10,000 miles left on them, they don't dispose of them. They don't take advantage of the fee that has been remitted to your counties that deal with waste tires. They instead sell them out the back door to used tire dealers. I'm sure when you drive up and down the major thoroughfares, anywhere you go in Tennessee, you see used tires, five bucks, 10 bucks, get a new tire on your car. Those folks don't pay into the disposal system. They're not eligible to turn those tires in through a state-operated system. Those tires end up in our ravines and ditches and creeks. I live on the Collins River in Warren County. There's tires all in my river. Why are they in my river? Because they're not a part of the system. And so we actually proposed legislation, Representative Carter from Chattanooga, who was a sponsor before he passed away, to close that loophole. This year, we actually passed legislation that allows everybody to go after illegal dumpers. And it's explicitly about tires. It says anybody that dumps more than four tires, you can go after them as a, I want to say it's a Class E felony with a much greater fine fee on their activities so that we can get after this stuff. Tires are a big problem in Tennessee, and it's because we're charging the new tire dealers that fee. They aren't cashing in on that. Those tires aren't ending up in our landfills. They are being delivered to used tire dealers that then put them on people's cars for $5, $10. Maybe that's a good deal for whoever needs a tire on their car. But they're not a part of the system, and so they take that crappy tire off of somebody's car, and they put it in the back lot and pile them up until the pile gets too high. Then they pay somebody who's not regulated by the State in any way to come pick up those tires and haul them off. Where do they end up? They end up in our creeks. And so there are opportunities right now through legislation that just got passed that we could go after illegal tire dumpers in a more serious way. We can put up game cameras and catch these guys, get a shot of their license plate number, like when they pull up and they dump off into some creek or into some ravine, and we can find them. And we can help make them pay for our county programs that are cleaning up the mess that they're leaving behind. And/or we can all get together and go to the General Assembly next year and say, we want all these used tire dealers that are up and down all of our streets, they're totally unregulated right now, make them pay into the system, make them be responsible for the tires that they're taking off of somebody's car. And instead of them paying somebody under the table to go dump it into the creek nearby, we can actually make them pay into the system. And I just want you all to know that we've got opportunities here to get on top of that problem with the illegal tire dumping situation. Sorry that I was raising my hand in the corner and I'm like, I don't really want to talk on this, but this has been one of the issues that I've been very passionate about. Because again, I live on the Collins River, and I see the legal tire dumping happening every day. And we can have better public policy to deal with it.
So do you remember the House bill number that was?
I will. Don Barrett, I will send you the House bill numbers, and they're now public.
They're public chapters now, yes.
And I'll give you the public access.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have one of the first new signs up?
You were just... Motion, go back to session.
Send it.
I'll play the say out. Resolution 22-003 update.
I have that, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, you have, as it relates to this item J, several different things. First of all, if you will remember at our last meeting, we voted on and passed resolution 22-003, which was the flow control action as it relates to our regional county, our region and any provider, any disposal location located within the county. There was some questions that the media brought forth and others as to whether or not that action violated any Open Meetings Act. I contacted the next day the Comptroller's Office, General Counsel with the Open Meetings Record Office, met with her, and then provided information to her and instigated an investigation of our actions. Through that investigation, I provided her with both the audio recording of our meeting prior to that meeting, so that would have been our first meeting in April, the video recording, the video recording of the April 25th meeting, all the public notices, all the media responses, every action that this body has done or has responded to since the first meeting in April when the resolution 22-003 came up. And we have a conclusion to that investigation. In your packet is a letter from the Open Counsel, Open Records Council of the Comptroller of the Treasury's Office. In short, I will read it so you have it. It says, "Good afternoon, Mr. Barrett. Thank you for contacting the Office of Open Records regarding the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board's Executive Session. The Tennessee Open Meetings Act requires that members of the governing bodies discuss or deliberate public business appropriately noticed in public meetings." TCA 84, 8-44-102. The Tennessee Supreme Court has recognized that the attorney-client exception applies to allow members of a governing body to meet in private with an attorney to receive information about matters related to ongoing or potential litigation. Smith County Education Association, V. Anderson, see also Van Hu, Van Huzer, the Warren, City Warren County Board of Education, Tennessee 1991, private meeting of school boards to discuss teacher discipline with board attorney permissible under Toma. Additionally, a governing body may have separate statutory authority to meet in private under certain circumstances. In the case of the board's off-record discussion of April 25th, because there was no attorney present, it would not, it would not qualify as an executive session. Further, our office is not aware of any statute that would provide an exception to comply with Toma for the discussion that occurred. A governing body may cure a potential violation of Toma by subjecting the issues involved to a new and substantive reconsideration at a meeting that is properly noticed and held open to the public, Johnson v. Metro Government of Nashville, Davidson County. Accordingly, because the board properly noticed that it would discuss resolution 22-003 at its April 25th, 2022 meeting, and did so subsequent to the off-record convening, that discussion in vote would likely qualify as a new and substantial reconsideration of this decision and therefore likely cure any previous potential Toma violation that occurred. I hope this helped, so please let me know if I can answer any further questions. And I present that to you for the record after submitting to them all the information they asked regarding the information we made public prior to the meeting. May I stand for any questions? Secondly, in your pack, as a result of our actions on that 22-003, the attorney for Republic submitted a letter to the, to the Rutherford County Mayor on June 6, 2022 stating that in their opinion, Rutherford County was in breach of contract because of two actions. The action we took in denying the expansion application and the vote that we took on resolution 22-003. Subsequently, Rutherford County, through Baker Donaldson, has responded back on July 5, 2022 stating that, no, they're not in breach of contract, stating that we, our board, has its own distinct legal powers and obligations. We are not part of Rutherford County or any of the counties that we serve, and if anybody breaches the contracts, it's going to be Republican. So the attorneys are having fun. I just thought I'd let you guys know what we said. And I'll stand for questions on that as well. You have a copy of all that in your packets.
Any comments, any questions? Thank you for that information.
All right. We will move on. Legislative updates.
Yes, so it's not as exhaustive as I would like it to have been. Try to get better at that. And I could not find anything on Mr. Pody. I will find that and respond back to this board within 48 hours. But that is public information out there available on the web. Search. We're just utilizing my phone for members to join in on the conference, so it makes it more difficult for me to search.
Old Business Tennessee Environmental Show. I was there. I saw Donna, but I never could get around to talking to her. I saw her in the distance. Anybody else make it? You made it. Good show, good show to go to. I encourage you to go in the future, get an opportunity. Now, Recycle Coalition, I did not, so I said no.
I plan on assuming that, sir.
I made it there. I just don't know about that one yet. I'll try my best. This group right here, they're growing, good size too. They're, so I encourage anybody to support them, please try some. You may know any other meetings that are coming up. I know TML's coming up. I think it's more of a governing body and it's not much on what we deal well. When I say what we deal with, it's not the man on the street. It's all of our conference. It's more elected officials and that type of stuff. Okay. Next meeting. Who wants to, are you back at Rutherford County or are we moving circle or...
We are, and we can have a little bit of discussion on that, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. We can.
I'm happy with wherever we go. The, the issues we're starting to discuss and the time it's taking is, it's increased over the last couple of years, I think we all agree. It would be nice if we could find one location per year and stick there instead of changing every quarter. That's my personal preference, but I'm open to the will of this committee. It makes it easier for me to do announcements about the public notices for the meetings, where they're going to be held. As it is right now, we'll set a date and we'll have to come back and find the location later. And timing isn't always the best in getting out public notices like I'd like to, because I don't have all the information at one time.
Does everybody, does anybody have a problem with that? One site a year? That be our... I tell you what, I'll step up. We'll do it in Cannon County for one year.
Thank you.
At the courthouse.
You'll see in your packets, example notice that I want to start using is one that's similar to what the Election Commission uses. So it should be the last page in your packet. It should cover us on anything and allow for the electronic meetings for the members and allow for any disabilities and things. But that'll, that'll help me make sure we meet the standards we need to for public notices and things. We use those for the Election Commission right now without any issue. So then unless there's some objection, I'll be using that for public notice going forward.
Do we have, do we have a motion? Do we have to hold a motion for that one year? Yeah, let me, let me say one thing on that. When, if we get into the lawsuit side, I kind of feel like maybe we ought to have that meeting in Rutherford. That's where everybody, that's where everything's kind of concentrated. And I don't want to put anybody in a, I know it's not a handicap. Well, I mean, you can, if, that issue comes up or we're talking that, then we can have that meeting in Murfreesboro. Specific, especially legally. Right. That's fine. And also saves us a little bit of money on attorneys traveling. Hey, they hit the clock and they walk out the door, maybe before. Hang up the phone. And they don't hit that clock till they come back in the door. So it might be a little cheaper on us. They have to be present. But other than that, you know, it's fine. The date?
So just for clarification, we're saying for the next year, regular meetings are going to be Cannon County, but any special call meetings with, you know, lawsuits being...
I think if our attorney needs to be present for some reason, then we'll move it.
Okay.
You want to put that in the motion? I know that's complicated things, but I can't make a... I know, but you need a motion for that. All right. I make a motion as we start that for one year, we'll have all of our regular meetings in Cannon County, except when we have an issue with the lawsuit or that we have to consult with our lawyers, then we'll meet in Murfreesboro. I say... Before we do that, can we, instead of starting it a year from today, would be better to start it a year from January. You go from now to January. Well, you want, you want to do fiscal year to fiscal year? That'd be eager to know when it's coming up. Right, be fiscal year to fiscal year.
So July 1 through June 30.
And that's when all the county businesses... Okay. That's second Mr. Bush's motion.
Thank you. All right.
Motion number second. Do it on a fiscal year. Yes, sir. And go on to Cannon County. Any more discussion? I want to play the say out. Any opposed? Now the dates. Our next meeting?
October will be the next quarter. While everybody's looking for that, we approved the agenda with a public hearing slash public comment section on there. I think I put this in the email to everybody, but for public disclosure, since we meet quarterly routinely, in some cases yearly, and sometimes, as we've seen, our actions require public hearing before a second vote or initial vote, if there is no objection opposed to the chairman, that that be a standing item on there to be able to use if needed be, knowing that we're not always going to have a public hearing, but we will always have a public comment section at every meeting, just to give us the timeframe that we need.
I second. I tell you right now, October, second week of October, I'm... Where are you going? Stupiding? I don't even know. I'm going to be in Murfreesboro and I'm going to have a conference. Just whatever works for everybody, be that... So I can stake out for a meeting.
Thursday nights are county commission meetings. Darren ordered the city meeting nights. It might be problematic.
Yeah, it's just every, well, the 6th and the 20th and the 27th are their regular meetings. The 12th will be on Wednesday. That's, that's an afternoon meeting for workshop, so. I know the first week of October is fall break, so I'm not that, I don't, I still, I have kids still in school, but for some reason, we still go on vacation for fall break. So maybe, like I said, if you're not, are you on a whole week bill for the 10th through the 14th?
Does that fall where?
No, that's the 3rd through, Rutherford County's 3rd through the 7th. First week. Second week's 10th, 3rd, 14th.
We got... I was supposed to be in Murfreesboro though.
We can do the, we can do the...
Don't go ahead, we got lots here. I'll look at you.
Do we think Mondays are okay? Is that a pain in the rear for everybody? Is that okay?
Monday's fat.
17, 24th or 31st. The 31st will be Halloween, maybe. We're going to do Halloween on Monday.
I like, I like the 17th.
17th.
Is that a Monday?
That is a Monday. October 17.
October 17. 6 o'clock.
Cannon County Courthouse, 6 p.m.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? Who could take himself out to eat? Okay, we in no further business. Motion closed. That's it.